Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont. Committee, the whole meeting for December 16th, 2010. I'd like to begin by having our clerk take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsen.
Here.
Trustee Clubenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Here, sorry.
Attorney to us.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Police Chief Mullhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief and Deputy Liquor Commissioner Winter.
Here.
Director of Fire Prevention Gerald Daniels.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Mathis.
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker.
Here.
Village Planner Malik.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this evening are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held December 2nd and board meeting held December 6th, 2010. Any corrections to be reported to the clerk? Very none, moving right along. Open forum. We do not have any open forum requests before us this evening. Reports, I just have a few quick things. First, I would like to offer my condolences and condolences from the Village of Westmont for the passing of Papa Pacero, of Papa Pacero's restaurant. He passed away on Tuesday of this week. I don't have all the information on the arrangements. I don't know if anyone else here might have that this evening, but Papa Pacero's restaurant was an institution in the Village of Westmont. It was one of the first restaurants to be developed and open at the south end of the village. And they served excellent food, have been well-renowned members of our community, well-respected. And I know oftentimes the Village of Westmont staff would have retirement parties, birthday parties, and different celebrations from different village, for different village employees at Papa Pacero's, and the food was always very, very good. So my condolences to the Pacero family on the passing of their father, who was a long, long time businessman in the Village of Westmont. And the next thing I just wanted to mention once again is to, because it's the holiday season, to remind those people here, those people that might be watching us on TV this evening to visit our shops and restaurants here in the Village of Westmont. For those who are so inclined, go buy a new Mercedes, BMW, Lexus, Toyota, Lincoln. They all have plenty of cars for sale, and we do get sales tax from all that, all those sales. So whatever you can do to support the business community in our restaurants and specialty stores, they certainly appreciate it this holiday season because they're all struggling to keep their heads above water. Maybe not the car dealers as much, but a lot of the other businesses. And with that being said, moving right along, our village clerk.
I really have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Our village attorney.
I've noted that item number five appears to be a liquor license request from the Westmont Yard. At this time, the village does not actually have a category that this establishment would qualify for licensing. Therefore, we would ask to remove it from the agenda at this time for further consideration.
There was one other thing that I neglected. It was not around on our original agenda, and that is the fire department has a storm-ready presentation. I asked Frank Trout to come forward for that presentation. Please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Village Board. This last year, Fritz Hayden joined the Emergency Management Agency of the Village of Westmont, and he came to us with a lot of energy and ideas, and he helped put together, matter of fact, he put together our storm-ready project. So I'm going to turn it over to Fritz.
Hello. Good evening. Tonight, we have a few guests with us. We have Jim Alsop and Ed Fenella from the National Weather Service, and they're here to explain what sort of accomplishments the EMAs accomplished over the summer in getting storm-ready. So I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening. I'm Jim Alsop with the National Weather Service in Romeoville. And to give you a little background on the storm-ready program, this was something that was developed several years ago. The Weather Service Office in Tulsa, Oklahoma, had a situation where a tornado hit a community. The Weather Service actually had a warning, but the community did not receive the warning. They didn't have good communications between the Weather Service and the community, and there was loss of life there. So to rectify the situation, they developed the storm-ready program, and that program has since been implemented nationwide. Basically, the storm-ready program is a way for the National Weather Service, working with state and local emergency management, can help get communities and counties better prepared for severe weather. Some of the requirements to receive the storm-ready status would include having a 24-hour warning point and an emergency operations center, having redundant methods of receiving warnings from the National Weather Service, having redundant methods of passing those warnings on to the community through sirens, cable TV override, text messages to people's phones, that type of thing, to get the word out to folks. Another one of the requirements would be to have weather radios at all public buildings so that the community will be informed of any type of severe weather alerts from the National Weather Service. Also, having trained spotters is essential. The National Weather Service, we can issue warnings quite often based on information we have on radar, but getting ground truth from trained weather spotters in the community helps us do a better job. So we put on training programs, and we've actually had several training programs here in Westmont for the community. And also educational programs for the public on how to deal with severe weather, preparedness information. Those are all parts of the storm-ready program. So Frank Trout and Fritz Hayden have done a lot of work in putting this all together for the community, making sure all the requirements have been met, and I'm happy to say that they've not only met, but exceeded all the requirements of the storm-ready program. So tonight, we'd like to congratulate the Village of Westmont. We've actually got, have 51 storm-ready communities across the state of Illinois, about 1,700 nationwide. So this is quite an achievement. It's not a lot of communities have gone through the work of doing this. So at this time, I'd like to congratulate Chief Trout.
Mayor, would you like to come forward and take some folks?
This is so cool.
Want to step over here?
Sure. We have both a letter recognizing Westmont as a storm-ready community and also a couple of road signs so that as people come into the community, we'll know that this is a storm-ready community. We provided with two signs. If you need additional signs, we can give you information on how to.
Why don't we get photo ready?
Hopefully, this isn't going to glare on you. This is a road sign. It's reflective. You want it, I can point it down.
One more. Congratulations. Brother of achievements in this area.
And with this recognition, the Village of Westmont has achieved a very important level of readiness in protecting its citizens and property from severe weather. Storm-ready communities are better prepared to take the right actions to save lives when severe weather strikes, and this preparedness comes about through better planning, education, and awareness of weather hazards. The requirements for storm-ready are quite rigorous, as Jim described here. They include strengthening communications, advanced planning, monitoring weather conditions when storms are possible. Storm-ready can't stop the storms from coming, but it does enable protections that will reduce the potential for disastrous weather-related consequences when severe weather does strike. So the efforts of folks here, Fire Chief Trout, Deputy Coordinator of Emergency Management, Dave Lincoln, and Fritz Hayden, fantastic work, all involved in monitoring weather conditions, storm spotting, and relaying weather warnings to provide the citizens of Westmont with an important extra level of defense against storms. So again, congratulations.
I'd like to have this opportunity also to invite any resident or local person that might want to join our emergency management team, 18 years of age and older. You could serve your community. We have a fantastic group of individuals, and it's a way of giving back to our community. The door is open at the headquarters station located at 6015 South Cass Avenue. Any information you need, we're always willing to talk and would love to welcome our residents or even some of our local area residents. Matter of fact, one of our deputy coordinators, Ed, lives in Clarendon Hills, and you'll be seeing him next month, at which time he'll be receiving his 40-year pin in service to the Village of Westmont. So for Ed and all of our volunteers, not only with the storm-ready program, but you see us throughout the year with all the different events that they volunteer for. It's a great group of people, and we're on the march. Thank you very much.
Thank all of you for coming in this evening. Another award to all the volunteers who spend so much time protecting us in one way or the other here in the village. Wish to thank you for all your volunteer time throughout the year. Thank you. Next, we have our village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. I'd like an executive session for personnel. Also passed out a list of supplemental purchase orders. It just draws attention to the fact that on your regular agenda, you have a purchase order number 11024985 that appears on the finance ordinance simultaneously. This is part of the budgeted costs for the radio upgrades, is part of the consolidation with the Downers Grove for our dispatch service. And then I wanted to mention that on Monday, we will finish our last department presentation. We've got the, what we're calling the General Administration Group of Administration Finance, IT, and Clerks. We'll do that on Monday evening. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, start with Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just to echo the mayor's comments on the passing of Papa Pacero, condolences to the family. He's been a longtime friend of Westmont and probably one of the kindest and most generous people you'll ever know or have met in your life. Just a very, very good and kind man, so he will greatly be missed. Also, wanted to let everybody know, Eclecticville is again open for business. Mr. Varega is feeling good. He's on the mend, and he's back open, so be sure to stop in and frequent that fine store on Cass Avenue. And also wanted to mention, stop in Novel Experience again if you get a chance because she is adding different types of inventory every day. It is more than a used bookstore. It is definitely a gift shop, card shop, so definitely stop in some of our fine stores on Cass Avenue. And since we won't have a chance to do this before the Christmas holiday, Merry Christmas to everyone and stay safe. And, oh, I do have one more thing, sorry. I wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce and our business owners for coordinating the wonderful decorations that we see on Cass Avenue. They look absolutely great. They're tastefully done. They're pretty. They're cheerful, and just thank you to everyone that made that happen and everyone that participated in it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
Just a Merry Christmas to all. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Fumming.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Scott.
I want to thank, I'd like to congratulate the Westmont High School for their Christmas concert that they had last week. The choral part and the ensemble, it was tremendous. Think you're down at Symphony Hall when you're listening to the orchestra play down there. It was just tremendous, tremendous. Everyone should get out there to see it every year. It shows why the fine arts are such an important part at the Westmont High School and why it's known for that. Again, next year, hopefully, we can get the place filled and the residents can see it. But congratulations to them.
Sounds good.
Merry Christmas to everyone, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery.
I echo the condolences and wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and please, please, please keep an eye on, you know, this is the season of potpourri burners and candles and, you know, loading up on the decorations. So please keep an eye on them, and let's avoid any tragic fires that could happen from that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Clubenow.
Just a couple of items. This week, for some reason, I know we usually have our monthly pager test. It's the first Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. when the sirens go off, but for some reason, on the 14th, I received two more of the monthly pager tests at 7:48 in the morning and 10:00 a.m. Is this got something to do with the move going over to Downers, or is there some reason we received an extra test that my?
I think it might have been reissued because some people didn't receive it. Is that the reason?
I just received an email from our Nextel representative. Nextel is part of the service that we use. Jeff Olson, our supervisor of support services, is working on them. There's been a change somewhere with Nextel hardware and Nextel pagers, and we're notified there's another change coming in January, and so that may have been the cause for it. There have been times that he sent it out once, maybe twice, just to make sure everybody got it, but we found out that some village employees did not get it. He fixed that problem. As of late, Tuesday afternoon, everyone should have gotten their pages.
Okay, okay. It was just weird to come another week later and twice a week later, so.
We're, he was tweaking the pager system and just making sure that, you know, you get more, hopefully, you're getting them rather than not getting them, and that's the most important part.
Okay, thank you. Also, I was looking for, and maybe we're not receiving it, but I can't seem to see that we have received any Economic Development Committee meeting minutes. I went back over six months of our Friday reports and stuff. I don't have any in the computer. Does anybody remember even getting any economic development?
Fred, here.
The reason I questioned it is while I was reviewing.
We haven't had a meeting, we missed one month, right?
We actually missed a couple of months.
I went back all the way into July at that point, and I still haven't seen it in the Friday report, so I just didn't know if I'm missing something. And the reason is because on one of the audio tapes on the interviews, there was a mention of that the mayor and board, I guess, are looking at some kind of a rent subsidy for downtown businesses, and that was such a shock to hear our economic developer telling an interviewer, and I have not heard anything about it, and I kind of would like to know what's going on before we start talking about it to people interviewing.
Okay, well, trustee, that came out of a meeting that was facilitated by the mayor and trustee Seneca as a part of the EDC. It was a special meeting where we invited some downtown building owners, some real estate brokers and agents to come in and say, what types of incentives would you like to see the village consider to fill up some of the vacant storefronts in the downtown? And this is a concept that came out of that meeting that we had, and after discussing it with the mayor and the village manager, it was decided that what we would do would be to consider including that in our preliminary budget discussions for the village board's consideration. So by way of appropriation, that is how the village board as a whole would address this. If you choose to endorse the idea and you like it and ratify an inclusion of a specific sum of money in next year's budget for such a program of rent subsidies in the downtown, then we will move ahead and modify our ordinances to include that as a permanent part of our downtown development grant program, a new category, if you will, to go along with the facade grant improvements and the infrastructure improvements for things like ADA accessible bathrooms and upgrades to plumbing and electrical systems.
When was this meeting held, this special meeting?
Oh, gosh, when was it? August or September, Sue? I think it.
There were no minutes, no information. I don't even think it was posted.
It was an official committee meeting. It was just a.
He said it was a special committee meeting. That means.
No, it was an outgrowth of the EDC. It was something that came out of the EDC meeting where we were just kind of brainstorming for additional ideas. So, you know, that would certainly not be something that we would pursue unless and until the village board, by way of including it in next year's budget, ratified in appropriation for that type of program.
Could you go back and find the minutes for 2010 and email them? I'd like to, because like I said, I went back through July, at least Friday reports and other things, and I haven't seen any minutes.
No, I think that's a good point, Pat, because I didn't realize, I mean, I didn't even realize we weren't getting them because I get them for being chair of that committee. So I see them all the time, but, yeah, we really need to be sharing those with the board, so maybe we could just go back and.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it, that we can be heads up, because it was such a shock watching it on the video, and I'm sitting there wondering what they're talking about.
You know, I would also encourage board members, once in a while, if you have the opportunity to come to one, you know, come to those meetings. I know trustee Scott has been there. It's, you know, it's a good committee. It's just like any of our other committees, so, which I can kind of understand because we don't do committee, we don't distribute all those minutes unless you come to the meeting, you know, for like planning a regular committee meeting. So I see how those kind of slip through.
And that's fine, and, you know, that's great. Could maybe a couple of those meetings be in the evenings so people could attend? The work?
Yeah, because nine o'clock on a weekday precludes me.
Yeah, we could do that. And others from going. Absolutely. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. And just want to wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing, public hearing, 2010 tax levy. Board to conduct a public hearing and adopt the proposed 2010 tax levy ordinance on Monday, December 20th, 2010.
It's actually just for information. For Monday, we'll have that public hearing as we've published in the newspaper.
Is there anyone here, perchance, that is here to speak on this issue? Thank you. Unfinished business. Development permit request, 15 South Cass. Board to consider the development permit request from Mr. Jerry Navarro for a family restaurant at 15 South Cass.
Hi, folks. How are you?
He'll turn it on.
Thank you.
Somehow it senses those.
These are some drawings that Thatcher Oaks awning has prepared for us to show you folks the canopy that we're looking to put up at 15 South, and here's a better look at the front. Canopy will start from the front door, go around the west side of the building as well as the north side. It'll stick out a little further than the present canopy, which will be even with the soffit, ending with the soffit, as you could see. The other canopy is stuffed way in the back, close to the wall, and you can't really read it. That's what I had there. Does anybody have any questions?
No, that looks really nice.
What colors are it going to be?
The canopy's going to be black with white or a gold. I noticed most of the canopies on Cass Avenue are black in color.
What color is the one that's on there now?
Right now, it's like a maroon.
Maroon.
That'll be removed as well as the canopy over the walk-up window. A marooned canopy, as you could see in the picture over here.
It looks very nice, I think. The fencing, because you were going to use the window, right?
Absolutely.
So you'll be repairing that fencing or replacing it?
Actually, I'd like to put in something a little bit more durable. What's there is a plastic PVC.
Okay. Yeah, that would be nice.
If we could put a bolt in a wrought iron, nice tasteful wrought iron railing, that won't be easily vandalized or broken.
Looks nice.
And I see it'll have a place for your phone number and including a website on there, so that's kind of nice when they drive by.
Yes, and on this side, there will be an additional, as you could see on this picture here. There you go. What shows this side right here?
You even have it on the back of the building, which is.
Yes. All three sides will have our name on it, as well as catering, carryout, delivery, dine-in. I know that there's an ordinance on the signs, I believe, that you cannot put a sign up on that building. Is that correct?
The ordinance, Mr. Navarro, states that you can't put a sign on the roof.
Right, on the roof.
And we'd like to work with you at the staff level to ensure compliance. I think you are entitled to some additional signage because this is a corner lot. Yeah, you can do two signs on the canopy.
If it's two signs, would that mean he can't have it on all three sides?
Unfortunately, unless the board granted him a variance.
And there's never been anything on that other side there, so for one direction coming into town.
That'd be nice.
Until you get there, they don't see it. The same thing for the people in the trains, they can't see it either.
Yeah, I actually like that idea.
I like that. I think it's.
No one has ever done that that's been in that building. On that corner.
That's a good idea.
Both sides of that corner.
He'll hit it from all three sides, son.
It'll wrap completely around, correct? I don't know if you folks received an email that I sent over, Mr. Kimball?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Regards to the floor plan.
Floor plan?
Do have a approximately 36 seats utilizing that bench seat that is on the south side of the dining room, as well as putting four or five additional tables inside, small little foretops. Thought I had a drawing of it here. I could email over the drawing to you. And that's about it. Our menu will be faxed over a preliminary menu, which.
That was in the email, too. You gave us a description of the menu.
Okay, thank you.
Which was really good. And the pricing and the hours.
Yes.
Fees, which obviously is, you've got to kind of play it by ear. Yeah, so we got all that.
All righty.
Thank you.
Mr. Navarro, for the evening, for the dinner menu, will that be with waitstaff or will it be you go and you order and?
It's going to be self-serve, like Bernard's Cafe at 63rd and 83.
83, yeah.
Similar to that.
Okay, go ahead.
So while you're, hopefully, having people inside eating, you're still going to be able to do some catering if people come up and order food or parties and stuff?
Absolutely, absolutely. Our focus is going to be on catering, carryout, delivery, as well as the sit-down.
If you do a delivery, do you have a truck with your name on it? Should we expect to see some kind of a van, or do you use something that doesn't have the name on it?
Oh, no, definitely, we'd have our name on the vehicle.
Okay. There's no problem parking that in the parking lot? Okay.
Fred, the seating in there, 36, are we at the, how many are we going to be, for the seating in there, is 36 allowed?
I would prefer to the. I haven't seen a drawing yet to be able to verify that, but you certainly be limited to the floor space.
Okay.
Code.
How soon do you think you're going to be?
Well, I would like to be up by March 1st, up and running, with a soft opening, get the kinks out, be ready to go full force come spring.
Will you be looking to sell alcohol or?
No, absolutely not. I thought about it, and the congestion on Cass Avenue right there.
Getting in and out.
...all those distractions with the trains and stuff, I'm actually against it.
And you'd probably want to turn your tables over more quickly than, you know...
Right. I mean, the money is made in the alcohol, but safety of the people is more important.
Are you looking at ice cream or an Italian lemonade type of...
Italian lemonade in the summer, different, like Mario's has, they have a dozen flavors. That's what I visualize, the space, people flocking around for the lemonade at nighttime for a great Italian appetizer, or come around and...
Going down to Mario's and Freddy's in Cicero on a weekly basis, you're exactly right, that's a tremendous straw.
We don't have anything like that.
Have you been in contact with the DuPage County Health Department?
Not as of yet, but I will.
Suggest you visit them as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, get them on board.
They can be rather cantankerous as far as some of their requirements, so the sooner you can have that under control, the smoother things will run, I'm sure.
Thank you.
The walk-up window, then, you'll be using it during the winter as well as during the summer?
I would love to say yes, but I opened that window a couple times, and the breeze that comes through there, and this was two weeks ago.
Probably not a good idea.
I would, I'd like to just throw this out here for future, possibly putting, if you've seen, some of the buildings have an actual temporary canvas wall that they put up with a door.
Yeah.
So, if we, you know, if things go well, and we do need to utilize that window where our carryout and pickup customers will come, maybe at that point in time, I would ask for a permit for a seasonal temporary canvas wall with a couple doors up, and it would, I envision it being starting here on the rear side, and coming around, so if you had a door on this north end of the building, and just coming straight directly down from your canvas top, bolting it into the sidewalk, which would be removable come springtime, and obviously, we'd leave enough room for the pedestrians to walk, it wouldn't exceed any further than the little picket fence. And to enclose it in with a door on the north side, and then a door to walk out of here, so people would be able to at least stay inside there while they're moving through the line to pick the order up.
That's nice, except if it was a solid one, I worry about the safety of people when you can't see in there. I think as long as it has some kind of a clear...
Like the tent, yeah, with the windows in it.
Yeah, as long as somebody can see what's going on, I don't like the enclosed part.
Correct.
But yeah, I thought that'd be a great pickup window for outside orders, they could park in the back if it doesn't bother the State Farm Agency there, have a couple of spots where people could pull up, and then just go to the window to pick up their stuff, instead of having to go all the way inside and wait in line when you have inside customers.
Right, absolutely.
It'd be a great pickup window for orders.
I think most of those would be at nighttime, and State Farm's closed anyhow at that time, so...
Yeah, I think when they're open, it's just going to be the little bit, but I don't think when they close, it would be a problem at all. So, yeah.
I recommend we deliver it, and then you don't have to fight the traffic.
Even better.
There you go.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions?
Just to make sure that you're aware of our facade grant program?
I'm not aware of it, no, I'm not.
Fred, that would qualify, wouldn't it?
This would certainly qualify under our facade grant program, the awnings and any signage, lighting, doors, windows.
Chamber. Oh, and the Chamber of Commerce. Have to join the Chamber of Commerce, I would hope, I would hope. You know, that's the thing I always ask, don't I? You know I do.
Page County, Kent County, and Cook County.
That'd be great, thank you for inviting me.
So, we have a great chamber, and they have a really good reputation, and help try to get the information out to their members, so it's a good networking way.
And you'll be right across the street from them.
Yeah.
They'll probably be over at your place for lunch.
That's right.
Yep, that's right.
We really do have a good chamber.
We got them right there.
We really do.
Okay, if, I just thought it'd be nice for the people who are listening, since they don't have it, that your lunch menus, you're anticipating at the time, nothing's etched in stone, is between 5:95 and 9:95, and dinner around 8:95 to 16:95. It seems like a very reasonable pricing for downtown there. And a lot of Italian food in here with homemade Italian sausage, with peppers, potatoes, chicken. I'm not an Italian person, so I don't know what that other word is, eggplant?
Emigante.
Lasagna?
It's French, actually.
Yeah, I'm not into the Italian name, so, grilled veggie sounds really great, too, so you have, and seasonal specials, which I think is great. So, it sounds like you've got a great menu, you know, including Italian sausage, Italian beef, meatball sandwiches. Could have used you tonight, so, no, it sounds great, and I thank you for giving us this information.
And a pepper and egg sandwich during lunch.
A pepper and egg Fridays.
I hope.
Absolutely. Without a doubt.
It's a must.
Okay, no further questions, thank you for...
Thank you, thank you folks.
Coming out seeing Mr. ...
Thank you.
Next item, development permit request, 216 North Cass. Board to consider following requests from Mr. John Agadorne. A downtown development permit request to operate a music store, and B, masonry waiver request to operate a commercial business on a frame structure.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Last time I was here, a week, a couple weeks ago, one of the concerns that was brought up is the floor structure. And so, we immediately went out and hired a structural engineer, who I believe you were given the blueprints, and I'm not a structural engineer, but it sure looks like it'll do the job. It's supposed to hold up to 100 pounds per square foot, so we'd follow these blueprints to bring it up to code, and I think that was the only, other than that, I don't think there was any other concerns.
I think the board also received a copy of an email response from Mr. Doug Gamble with the Illinois Capital Development Board with regard to ADA accessibility.
Yes.
Questions from board members?
No.
No, I can't believe how quickly you moved on that, that's great, thank you.
He gave me the spirit. Any questions?
Any additional information that the board members might need in order to make a decision on this project?
That was the one thing we were waiting for.
One thing we wanted to say.
Away you go.
Great.
We do have the question of the clock, you know.
We're working on it, trying to track one of those down, a little harder than you think.
It can't be digital.
No, 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 mechanical.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Agadorne. As was mentioned, request to pull item five, and access to number six, liquor license, 645 North Cass Pizza Hut. Board to consider reducing the number of Class IV restaurant beer wine liquor licenses by one, and subsequently increasing the number of Class IV liquor licenses by one to accommodate a change in ownership of Pizza Hut, 645 North Cass.
Thank you, Mayor. The request for the Class IV liquor license is brought to you by Franchise Management Investors, who are the new owners of Pizza Hut. This is the Pizza Hut that's located at Cass in Ogden. Basically, when you walk into the Pizza Hut today, there won't be any, there's no change in menu, there's no change in hours, it'll essentially look the same as it has before with previous owners. In conducting the background investigation, I talked to the general manager, she is TIP certified, which is an equivalent to Basset Training. She was asked to be here tonight, but she was unable to attend due to a previous commitment. The applicants meet all the requirements, they are in good standing with the state of Illinois, they have the proper insurance lease, and the floor plan was inspected by Director of Economic Development, Kimball, a few days ago. So, with that, they do meet all the requirements, and the background investigation is complete, and they're okay.
Questions? Any no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, variance request, 232 North Cass, Country Financial. Board to consider a special use permit request from Mr. Tom Caveney to operate a ground floor insurance and financial office in the B1 Limited Business District.
Good evening. Oh, hi, I'm Tom Caveney, I'm the landlord, and this gentleman's from Country Financial.
I'm Jeff Forman.
Jeff, and we asked for a variance to put in a business, so was, we had a retail business there before.
Would you, for those that might be watching this on television, give the exact location? What is, what is or what was that location prior?
Before there was Limley Design, it's an interior design store, they moved up to bigger space on Ogden Avenue, unfortunately, it's in Clarendon Hills.
Okay.
But they did well and moved up to bigger space, that's why they left.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Your Honor, just for point of clarification, this should say special use permit rather than variance request, I think.
The ordinance does indicate it's a special use.
Okay, no further questions. Be on our agenda for consideration on Monday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, variance request, 22 South Cass, Simply Nails Incorporated. Board to consider the following request from Ms. Keisha Knight. A, zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls, and B, request to reduce cash and lieu fee for parking variance. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I stand before you here today, first to thank you for granting me permission to open my salon at that location, and in realizing, having gone through the process a bit, that it does take a little bit of time, I wanted to make sure that I had ample time to prepare for my Phase II, which I expect to be in spring. And one of the other things that came out of the last meeting was that in order for me to even have additional equipment in the salon, I would need to have a variance request made, so that the additional service stations would be accounted for in the available parking. So, I stand before you now, making the request as opposed to next year, because I'd actually, it's actually easier and better right now, between now, which is usually around the October, November timeframe, and March, because that's the slow time for a salon, and that's the best time to do any remodeling that you actually need to do in the salon. So, that means that I actually need to have the equipment in the salon between January and March in order to prepare for the Phase II in spring of 2011.
Could we get input from staff on this request, please?
Good evening, Village Board members. There was a memo that was distributed, just to provide a little bit of additional clarification. Naturally, I don't have that memo with me this evening, but I'll summarize some of the key points from memory, or actually...
Shannon, you do have it? Sure.
What's before you this evening is the request for the parking variance for 10 spaces. That's the number of spaces that are required for the petitioner's plans at this point, which include three service stations and up to four employees. The reason that the petition began at this point in time was to help facilitate her plans to order equipment and get situated, and the phasing is kind of pushed forward a little bit, so that's why the variance is before you right now. The number of spaces, 10, with our new parking fund and our cash-in-in lieu program for any parking spaces that are waived by variance, requires a filing fee of $2,250. So, the secondary request that the petitioner is making this evening is for some relief from that amount. In your memo, there was some discussion on, this is the first time that we're actually seeing an application of that fund, so there was some concern from staff in terms of setting a precedent, whether or not the reduction could be problematic in future, people that request variances will also be eliminating or reducing the funds that are going to be built up over time to provide public parking in the central business district. That being said, we do understand, especially in this difficult economic climate, that that is an extensive amount of money due, so only the board can reduce the, excuse me, reduce the amount of money that is due for that cash-in lieu fee program. The way that that's calculated by the ordinance, which was approved earlier this year, is that $500 is due for the first three spaces, and then the seven remaining spaces are charged a fee of $250 each. So, in the applicant's current proposal for those three spaces and the four employees, the amount due would be $2,250. If at any time in the future, her expansion plans changed, and she wanted to add more service stations or more employees, we would have to revisit this, and then if another variance was granted, then we recalculate the difference between what she was proposing at that time, what she's already paid. Does the board have any questions?
Shannon?
Is the variance, the money, is it all due at one time? They haven't set up?
I believe that it would be, in terms of administering, the ordinance, we're still kind of ironing all the details out, but I think that it is due in one payment.
Obviously, the reason I was, you see where I'm going with it?
Sure.
Is to provide for new business, and in the economic times, and you'd want her to be successful, that you, either we spread it out, or, you know, the first year, you don't pay, and then you pay after that, so you get your feet, you know, get off the ground type of thing.
I wouldn't mind a payment schedule and spread it out a little bit.
I suppose that might be a question that our attorney could help answer, do we need to amend our text, or could we do that based on how we write this ordinance?
Presently, the way the ordinance is written, the money is due at the time of the waiver.
The ordinance for this petitioner, or the cash-in lieu?
The cash-in lieu.
Okay, so we would need to amend the text first.
Well, yes, we would definitely need to do that, if we want to put that in our ordinance.
But if we wanted to make an exception...
Potentially, we could make a policy as to how we collect that fee. Oh, okay, okay. That would not have to be pursuant to ordinance, we could have a separate policy. The only issue with that is that sometimes the policies get separated from the ordinances, and then over time, boards change, staff changes, and those two things get separated, so it's likely a better object to get together.
To just get it in there.
Ms. Knight, were you aware of this when you came into the village and looked for this property to rent?
In that particular space, no. So, one of the things, when I first came to the village to look at the spaces, and I'd looked at one on Quincy, and then looked at the one on Cass, there was acknowledgement that a variance might be needed for parking, however, at the time of my original petition, it was unknown how many spaces would actually be done, and the actual text for the parking variance was not available to me at that time. Because actually, if you read my letter, I probably would have reconsidered not using that space because of the high amount of cost for the parking variance.
Did you expect to go to maybe 21 cars eventually, I mean?
I don't actually think that there will be 21 cars, and I've actually started thinking about how could I alleviate that by doing things like having them park someplace else, and having a van that shuttles people over. So, I'm thinking about how could the salon expand in its present space and not cause a parking burden. But I did acknowledge in the letter that if I were to be at Phase III, it would cost $9,000 for the parking variances that would be required for that space, and even that is a large amount for a small business.
Shannon, when was this ordinance approved?
Um...
By the board?
April 19th, 2010. Thank you.
Okay. Have there been any other...
There have not been any other downtown parking variance requests. They've all, I think, come in at that threshold of three or fewer spaces, where staff's administratively been able to waive the requirement.
Okay, so this is something that the board has thought about for a long period of time, and finally acted on, so it's not something that just popped up overnight, but has been considered over a long period of, a long period of time.
And I just wanted to make one point, and, you know, maybe the communication was a little bit poor, but the phasing plans were not cleared to staff until the original submittal was made for the special use permit, so that part of the conversation did take place after the planning and zoning application was filed, once the number of parking spaces was understood.
I thought it was briefly discussed, because I remember you saying that you were hoping to do most of your parking would be at home and walk there, because you were close enough to walk. So I know there was a slight discussion.
And that discussion came about because one of the stipulations in the board agreeing to allow me to open the salon at that location was that it was going to be a single operator, single employee, and that if I were going to add any additional employees or service stations, that I would come back before the board. So it was during that process that I was made very much aware of what it was, and the cost associated with that variance was not given to me until after the space had already been approved, and it had already gone through the process.
Now, it says three service stations. Does that include yours?
Yes.
So you plus two other technicians?
Yes.
And then?
A receptionist.
A receptionist.
Right.
Other comments, board members?
Your Phase Two is going to be mid to late 2011.
Yes, so it will happen right around April, May, somewhere between there, because it actually needs to coincide with the summer.
Okay. And at that point, you think you'll have three to nine part-time employees?
Well, no, it's actually to start at three full, part-time employees that are, three full-time or six part-time employees that would rotate between the schedules. So at, at most, there should be three techs and one, and one receptionist in the salon at, at any given time.
Okay, but then it, but in your description of Phase Two, it says at most only three staff members on duty at the same time?
Yes.
So three staff members, three customers, six spaces?
Right, that's for the service stations. And actually, I was told that the number of spaces is actually calculated differently because it is a salon. It's a nail salon, which is actually very different from a barber or a beauty salon, because I cannot have two additional people in the salon at the same time that I'm there. So I can't have someone at the, the wash bowl, someone under the dryer, and someone sitting in my chair. The person that I'm servicing is sitting in my chair, and they're sitting in my chair, occupying my time at all.
And someone might come a few minutes early for an appointment and sit in wait, but...
Yes, but it's still the amount of...
But it's definitely a different traffic flow.
Yes, the traffic flow is, is very different than from a beauty salon, which is one of the other things that I'd like the board to consider, is that the ordinance says for a beauty salon, it's one parking space for per employee and two for each service station for patrons, when in reality, it's the amount of time between one patron and another is, should be relatively short.
It's pretty much one to one.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll weigh in on it a little bit. As the mayor did say, I mean, this is something we've been talking about a long time, and, you know, I appreciate everything that goes along with this. But I, I have to say that sometimes you have to start somewhere. I mean, we put these ordinances in effect, we put them into place, we feel it's the best thing to be done, and then, all of a sudden, here we go, trying to figure a way that we can add to the, or addend the ordinance, or add something to it, or, so to speak, muddy the waters more. I know that a small business starting out is a very difficult thing to do, and I appreciate that. But I'm sorry, I, I prefer not to do anything else with this ordinance as it sits right now. I mean, we, we talked about this long and in depth, I've spent many, many different meetings talking about this.
Yeah. You know, I...
We keep, we, I mean, you know, we, we, we put these ordinances in place, we, you know, this, we've worked on this, we, we put it in, and then we turn around, and sometimes we have a tendency to go, well, you know, whatever. No, the ordinance is the ordinance.
I, I definitely agree with what you're saying, but for me, this is the perfect of example of an ordinance that can't really be black and white, because this is not a beauty salon. This is not a barber shop. This is a very different business with a very different traffic pattern.
Okay.
But I definitely understand what you're saying, and I agree with that, but I think in this case, there's maybe needs to be a little wiggle room, because it is a different business.
Well, then we need to go...
Which is, I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay, then we need to go into our particular businesses that we have predicated on that, addend that.
Which is pretty much what...
And then come, and then come back and talk about this again.
Well, we can't, we can't anticipate what, who all or what all is going to want to come into town.
Right.
So if somebody comes in, like in this instance, that doesn't fit within any of the established categories, we can say, all right, let's amend the ordinance and say, all right, it's closest to what's in there, which is a barber shop or a beauty parlor, but it doesn't work there. So this isn't gonna, I don't think this, we're far from over with that ordinance, because we could get, Lord knows, and we'd all be rejoicing anyway if they came in. So I think we need a new thing that says a nail salon, and it's more appropriate with one for each employee, one for each patron.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Amend that section.
Right.
Other words, as far as the type of businesses and how we lay them out, as far as how many spaces for a beauty parlor per se, or how many spaces for a restaurant, evidently, we don't have anything in the category for a nail salon. So we go in and amend that part of it, put the nail salon into it, see where that calculates out into this particular calculation. It wouldn't be changing, it wouldn't be changing this ordinance. What it would do is be adding a category.
Right.
To your actual variance request and what you're looking for.
I'm not sure if this will help guide the conversation or not, but I want to mention one quick point. When we were first discussing the, the needs and the size of the salon, one of the considerations was made is that, yes, we do not have an exact match for nail salon, but generally barber shops and beauty parlors are similar. Staff administratively took a liberty in saying that a nail station and a fingernail station and a pedicure station, we will count as one station. So if we had taken the hard line of what code actually says, there are, you know, technically six stations there. So we tried to provide a measure of flexibility and have a, a reduction in, in the number because that fit wasn't very good. So, you know, fingers and toes on one person, one station, was how we interpreted it at the staff level.
So you already kind of made that calculation based on it?
Yes.
Well, unfortunately, the floor plan has them as physically different stations. You've got a nail station, and you've got a pedicure chair.
Yes, however, it is actually impossible for a nail salon to provide services without having a manicuring station and a corresponding pedicuring station, and, and have that be seen as one single unit, because each tech will actually need to have that kind of flexibility. And you go into some salons where they have fewer, it, what usually ends up happening is that there's more manicuring stations and fewer pedicuring stations. But what that causes is a bit of a clog whenever one tech needs to get at the pedicuring station. It adjusts the, the whole scheduling of stations. And if each tech is allowed to have one manicuring station and one pedicuring station, then each tech is able to do or perform whatever service it is, it is that they need to perform based on their own schedule. So if I'm in there for eight hours, I can perform manicures and pedicures on my eight-hour schedule, and I don't have to wait or reschedule any of my clients because someone else is using one of the two pedicuring stations. And that was kind of the thought around having a one-for-one for each of them, and that's why there's three pedicuring stations and three manicuring stations. And my goal is to keep them matched for that specific reason, because it allows each tech to be a little more independent.
And just to clarify, it's not as though you're going to have three techs that do pedicures only and three techs that do nails only.
No, when I get to that capacity, I'll be back here.
It's the same three handling both services. So it's...
When I get to that capacity, I will come back, because I know that that is adding more employees. And now we've intentionally separated the stations, but it's because we've got a staff of six that's actually handling one station. One set, one staff is handling a manicure, one staff is handling a pedicure. Right now, they're actually intended to be matched, so that at least there can be three techs in the salon, and neither tech is, from a scheduling perspective, is impeded by another tech.
Three techs, three clients.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Where do we go, where do we go from here?
I don't know, give me a good Christmas.
I think we, we need a little italicized addition to our ordinance for nail salon.
For next week, or for Monday?
For Monday. No pressure.
No. At this point, we have obviously two ordinances in the packet, and one indicates that she's asking for a waiver of 10 spaces. I assume that that means we're only going to be requesting a waiver of six or seven? I think she said she was going to have a receptionist too, so that would be seven? Waiver of seven spaces? So that would...
Well, the code requirement...
Reduce the fees, so I just want to...
Well, this would change the, this would change the code requirement.
The code, right.
The other question is...
Fees would obviously change too.
John's on vacation, and I know through other channels, Ann Marie is extremely busy. The urgency of this to come up with a new ordinance to change the code by Monday night, can you wait until the following?
Yes, that is exactly why I brought it before the board as early as I did, because I wanted the board to have the chance to respond to my request and to not feel as if they were rushed. I have a question for our legal counsel. I, I think that changing the code requires a text amendment, which requires a public hearing.
It does.
Which puts us back to a 60, approximately 60-day time period. I don't know if there's any way to address the petitioner's concerns with revisiting the special use that was previously approved. There may be some conditions that can be reasonably placed on that, but I, I think the other would require the public hearing, which we can, of course, start, because we'll have other petitioners with similar uses that should be addressed in the future, that I think...
Right, because I, I agree with trustee Fleming. We don't want to start on a, you know, special use jigsaw puzzle piecemeal. It's better to, if we have to, you know, we have a code that, that deals with each one that comes in.
Right. So for Monday, are we just taking this off the agenda?
Yeah, I think we, we take it off agenda, because I'd like to see a, a text amendment, and then as far as the, when is Phase, well, you're not going into, into this until the spring?
Technically, I'm getting ready to order equipment this month, so I have to order the equipment this month. And so I'm actually ordering, it's cheaper to order things in pairs than it is to order them as singles.
Can we do a straw poll?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean...
So I mean, I won't turn them on, like they, the, and the issue came up, because I was planning to order the equipment and just have it sitting in the salon. So there's one manicuring station, one pedicuring station for me to use, the others would be in the salon.
But not used.
But not used.
Right.
I was advised that even if they were in the salon, that I needed to have the variance request in, and that is why I'm standing before you, because I didn't want...
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is a straw poll, so that if we sort of get an idea where the trustees sit as to whether the text amendment would benefit you, but it would not, you would not have to wait to order your equipment.
Okay, thank you.
We'll start with you.
Yes, I'm in favor of the text amendment.
I gotta get my nails done more often, because I'm not, I'm not following the conversation quite as well as I should, it sounds like. Maybe you and the mayor can go over there and get your pedicures done. I may have to, because I'm not, I got, I got...
Are you referring to the manis or the fetis?
I gotta look that up. I'm not sure what that all means, so, uh, I'm not even sure what the straw poll is gonna, we're saying here, to be honest with you. The text amendment for what? For the variance? For the, just to do a text amendment?
No, text amendment's gonna be with, we're gonna have a category for items such as nail salons, which are not described or specified out within the code as it stands right now.
Because they don't fit within what fits now.
So if we do the text amendment, though, how is that going to affect her? Will she still, there'll still be a money that, that is owed?
Right.
There's still, but it won't be as much.
Won't be as much.
But it won't be as much.
Presently, the only place that she fits would be under barber shops or beauty shops, which require, what is it, one parking space for each employee and two for each patron's service area. I think what everybody's talking about is one per employee and one per, one space per patron area. So that would reduce the number of required spaces that she would need, which effectually would reduce the cost for the significant...
And then we wouldn't be voting on the, a waiver then, on a variance or...
Or variance. May or may not, depending on...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we may or may not, we don't know.
Well, I don't know what you guys are gonna vote.
But what would the, how, how would the receptionist fall in who doesn't do a patron, but she's an employee?
It's only counted as one space.
She'd be counted as the employee, it's one space.
One space. She's gonna drive there.
When she starts.
This is, this is, yeah, so we're kind of putting...
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of the text amendment and trying to help out, so if that...
Seven people then, we're talking seven spaces.
Seven spaces, as opposed to 10.
And right now, this price was for how many spaces?
10.
10, so it reduces it by three spaces.
Well, I'm in favor of that text amendment and, you know...
Doesn't mean we're not gonna, we're gonna waive everybody, but it means we're gonna make it fair for the type of business.
Right, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And I would agree with that, definitely.
Okay.
And I can tell both of you, you need to go get a manicure and a pedicure. Love it, trust me.
Thank you.
Been there, done that, okay?
We need more information than we need.
I'm just telling them they need to do it, it'll relax you a lot. No, I'm in favor of the text amendment.
Me too.
I can live with it, but I do know that there will be an overlap of, of customers, so it, it kind of bothers me a little bit on that point, because you don't clear the customer out and then wait in between for another customer come. I've been in the shops, I've been a hairdresser. So if the board can live with seven spaces, one per, per, I, I suppose we could do it, but I don't think, I think there's an overlap usually. They usually try to build up their schedule.
Yes, but in a nail salon.
So they have somebody waiting in line, by the time the one is out the door, the second one sits down there. I always wonder when they ever got a lunch break.
Yes, but in a nail salon, you don't want the overlap to be as large as in a hair salon. So when you're doing hair, the overlap is someone's at the shampoo bowl being shampooed, and then they go underneath the dryer, which keeps them out of the...
But I also know, when I, when I sat and was waiting for my sister, that they had people soaking their feet for their pedicures while they were still finishing a manicure. So they still had double people in there, so. But I, I can live with it as, as long as it doesn't cause a problem, but I know it can happen.
Pat, let's hope she gets that busy, okay?
Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah, but I've heard that problem before, when they were hoping downtown picks up and gets busy. I remember, I believe it was trustee Fleming, who says, "We just hope we have a problem like that downtown." So I don't want to see us cause a problem, that's all.
Keisha, total side note, side question. Are you gonna be doing the no-chip shellac?
Now you're way over there.
Well, that's, that's new, that's a new trend. So are you, are you gonna be certified for that?
I'm already, I do it now, because as a licensed tech, I can do it.
Explain that to me later.
I'll tell you later.
Trustee Fleming already knows about it.
I think he has it on his toes.
So we won't have to get another variance for this?
No, we would just reduce the number of spaces that are requested.
Okay, okay.
So...
Okay.
The proposal is correct, we...
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Next item, another waiver request, 6104 to 6154 South Cass, units 113 and 114. Board to consider approval of a waiver request, request from Mr. Donald Dibis Intercontinental Real Estate and Development Corporation. A relief from the sprinkler ordinance requirements for tenant improvement. Work to be done to 1,988 square feet of available tenant space in the Westview South Strip Center.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Andy Zamanidis, on behalf of Intercontinental Real Estate, I do have Mr. Dibis here, our Director of Architecture, and Mr. Halykias, who is a principal of Intercontinental. This Westview South has obviously a long history here and has not been a terribly successful shopping center. Give a little background before we get to the, the variance request, but it's about 20 years old. It's lost, as Mr. Dibis's letter points out, it's main anchor tenant, Rent a Center. Dibis's letter points out, its main anchor tenant, Rent-A-Center. And this is a company, the applicant, you know, by the by, that, that's a very successful commercial lessor, has done a lot with national tenants, Staples, Walgreens, CBS, Potbellys, and, you know, really sees this shopping center as it sits right now as not having the possibility to be successful. They considered redeveloping, or we considered redeveloping this site. The proposed use did not seem to be getting a lot of support at the staff level and have been looking at what could possibly be, be done with the site. Now, in the last meeting with staff, we found out there, there may be the possibility or an RFP may be solicited for a TIF district. And this is, this is relevant to this case because we have been talking to national tenants. One in particular approached about this site, but other ones that we have other relationships in places like Arlington Heights and Oak Brook with. And they, the footprint is inadequate for them. They, they think it's not deep enough and there's other problems with fitting into this space. Now, the, the rents we can get right now do not justify a major capital expansion. They just don't. The national tenant that we talked about would basically, to put them in, we'd have to lose money for a decade with the hope that they would attract other tenants. That's not happening. There are plans being floated around and reconfiguring the site, maybe doing an outlot that could have, you know, somebody act as a secondary tenant if we can get a Rent-A-Center. But what we need here more than anything is time. This, this center cannot continue in the shape it, it's in. We just don't know what we can do yet. And given that the, the village is going through some planning that may bring an extra tool to bear, which is a TIF, we know and we've had experience in many municipalities with using economic incentive tools to really refurbish old buildings and, and do a lot with them. And we think we can do something here. Right now, this is, it's a, we consider it a blight on Cass Avenue and which is a major commercial roadway for the village. It's a burden on us. You've all driven by it. Believe me, it's not fun having a lot of signs asking for tenants and actively, and that's not all we do. You know, we have a whole brokerage team. We have several relationships across the country and we, we just can't, can't get people there. Now, that is relevant to this because we do have one tenant who does want to go in there right now, Boomers, which is a, a retail clothing company, in a relatively small space, 2,000 square feet. And we understand, you know, the, why the village has the, the sprinkler ordinance, what you're trying to accomplish with that. And we're not looking for some long-term, hey, don't apply anything ever to us. What we're trying to do is before we get to a point of deciding what we're going to do here, and deepening spaces may very well be it. Instead of spending money that may go down the drain if we substantially reconfigure the site, we're asking for this tenant, for this 2,000 square feet, for a tenant that really is unlikely because all they're doing is selling clothes to pose some type of fire risk, to get a waiver that adheres to something that you've done before at 29 East Chicago, which is to do a two-hour fire rating, some metal studs, additional drywall that we're, we're fully prepared to do, to try to get something going on this site that will help us market it, make it relieve a little bit of the economic burden while we work with the village to either figure out what can be done overall or decide to pull the trigger and just get rid of the shopping center completely and do, do something else. But what we're, what we're essentially asking for here is a little bit of time because we don't know that we can justify for this tenant, especially since we're cutting rent for everybody. This is, this is really an economic drain as it stands now to make a substantial capital improvement, which the sprinkle, sprinkler ordinance would be. Now-
Can I, can I put something-
Just, 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 just a couple, just a couple points. If we come back with the bigger space, we have to come to you again and say no. If we substantially redo this site, obviously it will be sprinkler. But what we're trying to do is create an economically viable project, which is not what it is right now. I'm sorry.
Mr. Kimball. In the board packet, it says that the property owners previously requested a meeting with the mayor and staff to discuss a waiver of the water connection fee to enable them to provide an enlarged water line to enable the installation of fire suppression sprinklers for the property. The meeting took place on December 2nd. At that meeting, the property owners also raised another issue, their desire to seek a waiver of the sprinkler requirements to enable them to conduct a tenant build-out in units 113 and 114 of the property. What happened at the meeting? Because you tell us they requested to discuss a waiver of the water connection fee and the meeting took place. What happened?
Well, we, we discussed that and at that time, we thought we had an understanding that they were then going to give us a request to waive the connection fee for the, the water connection fee to make a larger pipe that would accommodate the needs of the sprinkler. It was also discussed that they would like to seek something else and we were a little bit surprised that we got this request instead of the connection fee waiver, which was the reason that that meeting was called in the beginning.
Okay.
The petitioners are certainly within their right to make a request to the village board for any and all of the above, but it, it did catch us a little bit off guard.
What is the cost, what is the water connection fee? What was that, that they request originally spoke to about?
About $10,000, Mr. Halikias. Is that, we're talking rough, round numbers. Some of that is brass goods, however. You know, the, the couplings and things that they must get from the village, those are hard goods that we have to give them and then turn around and purchase and replace so that we have an inventory so that when this happens again for a, a subsequent commercial customer, we have an inventory available.
What's the difference in cost between, as our ordinance reads now, to have to sprinkle the entire, what is it, about 10,000 square foot building? 20?
30.
30? Versus doing the skeletal connection and only sprinkling the 113 and 114 and so you have your water main going in, but you don't sprinkle the, the other stuff. What's the difference? Is it doable?
Reality, that's what the code requires, that any space that they remodel, they sprinkle that space. We are always, of course, encouraged to do the whole building. It's much more economical. But it's just the space remodeling that-
Well, I thought, I thought our ordinance required the entire building that when you do it.
As long as they bring it in and the space they remodel.
What's the, what's the, what's the estimated cost to do this?
Well, the 10,000 was just to connect to the main.
I know.
It has nothing to do with the construction cost. I would say he probably, I'm guessing, I'm guessing, 20 to $30,000 to bring the main to the building and probably $30,000 to sprinkle the whole building.
All right. Thanks.
That's how, well, we have it priced out though. We have, we have a $75,000 price tag on it. And, you know, again, there, there were facts that were made known to us at, at that meeting, including the consideration of TIF.
Right.
That they're brand new and frankly, open up a whole new world of possibilities that match up with our experiences. You know, we, we can get a national, I mean, and I think, sorry, go ahead.
I don't know how the other board members feel about this, but I can tell you how I feel about it.
Okay.
My mind is made up. I know exactly what I would like to see, but I'm only one. I want to see the TIF go through a large TIF. And I love the word blight because that helps a TIF. I want to see a large TIF district. I would not want to see you outlay that kind of money that I would like to see, I don't want to use the word dynamite on the property, but let's just say a different use, any different structure over a large TIF overlay, okay? So I am against you having to put out that kind of money because in the future, I don't see that strip mall as part of our comprehensive plan, at least the world according to trustee Emery. So what I would like to see is that you're required to do the fire control in the walls and studs and all that, which we've had other people do, and not sprinkle, with a short window, two to three years. If we can't get a TIF, if we get it, property owners that fight it and it either is, it behooves us not to go forward because it's too expensive to try to defend it, or, you know, the developers just aren't going to come the way we would like them to, then we revisit the issue. So that's where I stand on it.
And, and frankly, we, we find that more than acceptable because if a TIF doesn't come along and we can't make substantial capital improvements to make it a very different thing than what it is now, we're going to seek some other redevelopment opportunity. But our intention are, and this is not somebody who, this is their only commercial property. This is, it's, it's almost embarrassing for us to say, "We haven't been able to do this for you" when we've been able to do it for, for other municipalities. Now, there, there's other challenges, you know, with not being necessarily on a corner and, and the rest, but we, we think that if the right amount of money can be spent, which it can't right now because of the level of the rents, that we can make this site work. And we want to make this site work. And we are in the same boat as you. If we're not making money and you're not making sales tax and we, we, we think we can, we've brought a lot of sales tax to a, a lot of municipalities with Sam's Clubs and, and Staples and, and Walgreens and the rest. And, you know, we can do this here too. We just, we need time and we want to, you know, have a partnership with the village. And we, we'd love to know more about what you're considering on the TIF and, and the comprehensive plan and, and work together. Jointly, you know, when the TIF is up, we've done this with other municipalities jointly market sites at ICSE, both in Chicago and at Las Vegas. And we really want to make this, we really want to make this site work because we have it for two decades and it has not worked for two decades.
Right. Did you build that site or did you buy it?
I built it. The, the principal here was actually the one who oversaw the, the actual project, the actual building of it.
How was it in the beginning years? Any change to what it is now or has it always been that?
We've always had problems. We've never had to do a 100% I, never, in the 20-plus years.
I kind of agree with you. I'd like to see a partnership of some type to working with the village to, what can happen there? It sure can't get any worse.
We know it can get better.
The other thing I was gonna say is I was kind of surprised that it's Boomers because I had been, had some kind of emails back and forth. I thought they had gone to another community. I'm not, I'm not sorry to see them come back or that they're here, but I thought he'd already gone.
He kind of left it. We had several email exchanges several months ago and he opted to go elsewhere to another community.
From, from my brokers.
So if he wants to come to Westmont, it's good.
Our brokers and, you know, I mean, they did some, we knocked down some walls for them. And the last communications our brokers had with them is that, you know, if they, if they thought they could have a quick turnaround and we provide them with the fixtures. And there's really, there's really not substantial work there. It's fixturing, painting, you know, which we could turn around. So I mean-
So they're not gonna be doing the silk screening or anything there? This is just strictly a showroom?
Showroom and sales. Showroom and sales.
And 113 and 114, is that the old Rent-A-Center? Which, which units?
I think it's the old Vince Satori.
Absolutely delicious.
Back over there. That's right. What am I thinking? Oh, no, it was Vince Satori.
They were both. They were both in there.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, that's the dog wash one is.
Oh, the doggy wash place. No?
What was in there?
What used to be in there?
It was an old, like a gamer's garage, they called it, that was like, like those play action games like for PlayStations and things of that sort. And then there's a-
Really?
Yeah, then medical equipment space. So this is the pet store. Here's the State Farm Insurance. This is the new hair day place and then those two units right there.
Where's the space where Vince Satori and Absolutely Delicious used to be?
Vince Satori's a little bit more to the north.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, next to, the next jog up by Jackie Club. It'd be nice to see something in there.
I'm okay with the timeframe. I mean, you gotta, we gotta make it better.
So it would, that would apply to this one business only?
Yes.
This one business only. Any others that might be rented, they're gonna have to come in and go through the same process?
Hopefully the TIF will be up way before that.
I noticed under the recommendation from, I guess, staff is that, that if we recommend an agreement to be required providing sprinklers within a specific period of time, and they said perhaps two years, and I think instead of putting any time, just say until our TIF is either gonna be or not gonna be.
Well, I think we need to put a time limit on it because it can't be unlimited. But I think we ought to go three years because, you know, to do the projects that we envision and all that is not going to be a two-month project. So I'm okay with three.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got a time limit, some, whether it's connected directly to the TIF or-
Right. No, but a time limit and then we, we revisit it, you know, and talk about where we're going with it. So.
Is anyone else in agreement with that?
I'm okay.
And the fire department live with that?
Well, you know.
Our department just follows your wishes. So whatever you want to do with, and I guess, so I understand maybe a little bit better. Three years and they have to sprinkle the building or three years?
Three years. And we see whether now, you know, the TIF never went ahead and, you know, we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to decide whether they're gonna tear that whole building down or sprinkle it because our, our project did not go as planned. If our projects go as planned, then it becomes moot.
Okay.
Now, are they gonna fire coat all the way up through the ceiling, through the barriers? Is there gonna be a fire break?
To the roof deck, yes.
Through the roof, a fire break wall, okay.
Not a fire break. It'll just two-hour fire.
Well, two-hour, but I mean, it's all the way up into the-
That'll be on both sides of-
Both sides. Of that space affected, yes.
The center wall is coming out so that it's gonna be all-
They already took the center wall down.
All one unit. Okay.
But is it going on the walls of the businesses on the other side? Like we didn't want to disturb that one?
The Catholic shop.
Yeah. Are they going on the-
Our plan is to make sure that it's on both sides if they want to-
That's what I want to make sure. I don't want to-
Variance.
Double five eights, both sides of the wall.
So both sides, no matter if there's a tenant on those sides or not, they're gonna come in and double wall?
Yes, because those are straight walls. They're not like-
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't get an excuse later that somebody has too many bookshelves. So, okay.
The UL rating can be accomplished two different ways to get a two-hour rating. You can either do two layers of five eights on each side of the metal stud partition or if the renovation makes an easier transition, you can put three layers on one side and one layer on the other. So you still essentially have the same total amount of drywall and it also has a UL-approved rating. So once we get in there and really see what we're up against, we can make that determination. Our preference is to do two layers each side. That makes it simpler down the road for other renovations. But, you know, should there be something in a particular suite that it doesn't allow that, you know, there is another option. I wanted to clarify one thing. We talked about the three-year requirement. Should we have another tenant come in? And there's nothing on the table immediate nature, but as long as we are within the guidelines of the, the way the code is and the ordinance is currently written, i.e. we don't take out walls or don't take out doors or windows, they go into an existing space, I believe that would not trigger the sprinkler requirement any earlier than the, you know, the three-year window we're kind of talking about for this tenant.
If you start getting more tenants and you're gonna have to come back here to ask for a- ask for another, another variance or waiver, because this is to this space only, and if you start getting tenants and filling up the building, that's a different issue.
Well, the way the code currently reads, if I'm correct, is that as long as there are any modifications to existing walls, windows, doors of an existing space, an existing non-sprinklered building, that does not trigger the sprinkler requirement. What's triggered it on this particular space is that we had to move some walls for this tenant. There may be tenants that exist that want to go into an existing space as-is. Should that possibility come up...
Doesn't trigger it.
Doesn't trigger it.
I just want to make sure that's still an understanding.
Yep. That does not trigger it. We specifically went through that wording carefully.
We still want tenants with a lot higher rents, though, so we'd rather have a...
I'm not familiar with that tenant you spoke about, so is that, is there any concerns about chemicals or fire-type stuff?
They sell, they sell like, almost like sports apparel, you know, high school t-shirts, high school letterman jackets. They're not going to be doing the silk screening there, so it's a showroom, and at least in the letter of intent, it's showroom and sales.
Okay.
So...
Just, I just want to make sure I understand. Wasn't something also that triggered it as if it was, went from one kind of use to a more...
More hazardous use?
More hazardous use?
That's why all the questions about the chemicals and the screening.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you may not do any reconstruction, but if it goes to a hazardous use, okay.
Yeah, yeah, if we get something that has chemicals and stuff, yes.
Right, okay.
Right. That's why the question's about dyes and screening and everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Works.
Any other questions?
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, charitable solicitation, Misericordia Board of Concerns requests from Misericordia to conduct their annual Tag Days fundraising drive. It's the same as it's always been?
Yep.
Any questions?
Nope.
Moving right along. Finance ordinance number 16.
Waive the reading.
Request to waive the reading. Purchase orders. Any question on purchase orders?
I do have a question on the, it's just shy of $6,000 for Serv Pro of Lombard/Addison. Court ordered cleanup at 311 South Williams. Do we have recourse to get that money back?
Yes, we will be filing, you know, billing the individual. Failing that, we would place a lien against the property.
And this was ordered by the court?
Yes.
For us to do this, and the owner was ordered to pay, to reimburse the village for this?
Yes.
Correct?
Oh, so if he doesn't, he'll be in contempt?
Yes.
That's even better.
That's our understanding. We are dealing with a, an example of hoarding behavior here, though, I believe.
Yes. Thank you.
What kind of behavior was that?
Hoarding.
Hoarding.
People who accumulate a lot of things and don't get rid of anything. Make sure there's an ing on there.
Yeah, there's a...
Thank you, Fred.
On the purchase orders, on the second portion, there are seven vehicles. You think I'm going to let you get away with that?
No chargers. No chargers.
This, no matter what my opinion is on this, I think the people outside better hear about. Explain seven vehicles.
It's part of the vehicle replacement program. The vehicle replacement program is a program that went into effect, I want to say, in excess of two years ago. We replace a certain, set certain number of cars each year. This year, you'll see a reduction. Every year in the past, we've done six vehicles, we're only asking for five. The two SUVs which you see in there are vehicles of a three-year replacement. They're for our truck enforcement vehicle and our crime scene technician vehicle. Those are in a three-year rotation. Other squads are currently on a two-year rotation. However, we're dropping down to five. All the vehicles that are being replaced will continue to be continued-use vehicles. The SUVs are in high demand by other departments in the village. One is being designated by the, for the IT department, and it's up for the village mechanic to set the designation where the other one is going. As with all continued-use vehicles, once they come out of police service, the village mechanic determines whether they're going to be sold, or if they're going to be continued-use vehicles. So it's a, it's a plan that we've been doing to keep our fleet up to par. Several years ago, we did not replace the vehicles on a timely basis, and we started running into vehicles, line vehicles, patrol vehicles, having an excess of 100,000 miles. I can give you an example, is that my car, my squad car was reaching 105,000 miles and was being taken out of service, and I was getting a new continued-use vehicle with 95,000 miles. So it's a program that we put in place to keep our fleet up, keeps our maintenance costs down, and again, not something we take lightly. We reduced it this year by one vehicle because we felt the need, and it's going to be evaluated on an annual basis. If we feel that we don't need the cars, we need the cars. The collaboration between the finance department, police department, and the village mechanics.
I think the only issues I have, I know one of the SUVs has 70,000-plus miles, I guess it was, but it bothered me, a couple of the other vehicles, two of the squads are 2,009, with 30-some thousand, but I just, you know how I feel about that.
You'll see on there, the purchase order, five vehicles for squad cars. Two are semi-marked, in other words, they're used for patrol vehicles. They're off-color, they aren't our normal silver, I believe one, let the officer pick the colors. One was, they're darker colors, and they're the unmarked cars that we currently use. Those cars are supposed to say have patrol officers in full uniform, go out and do traffic patrol, other patrols, be able to, you know, look for suspicious vehicles, and also, I wouldn't say covert, but, you know, allows them to get into areas unnoticed where a marked squad car can't. Those two are the vehicles that you see our officers have the high mileage on because they love driving those cars.
Crown Vic's scream police cars, but is there, is there going to be, is this one of the last times you're going to be able to get Crown Vic, so?
Yeah, could very well be. Next year, well, this is the last year for Crown Victorious unless we get a purchase order early in May or June to buy the last round. Ford is retooling their fleet, they're going to a vehicle called a Police Interceptor. It's going to be a scaled-down vehicle. They also have a four-wheel drive or a SUV-type version that's going to be coming out. Chevy is no longer going with them. Chevy Impala is a Police Interceptor vehicle. They're kind of going down to the Caprice model, I believe, or even shorter than that. And Chargers or Dodge is also looking at changing their models. Next year, we're going to, as police departments across the country, are going to redo a major look at the types of vehicles, because all three major car manufacturers that supply police-type vehicles are changing their models, changing the interiors of the vehicles. We've already been to trade shows looking at this, examining it, looking at it already. We're getting ready. Sergeant, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Brenza, he is, has a daunting task in front of him, he's already beginning to collect data.
Okay. Yeah, don't demote him yet.
No, he's, he's probably there listening right now as we speak. He was working hard tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other question on the separate vote? With that being said, unless there's something else to come before the board, I would like to go into executive session regarding personnel as requested by the village manager.
So move Scott.
Second, Emery.
Call call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Kimball.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Povinow.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now adjourned to executive session.